Okay, we've gone live. We'd like to call this joint village planning board, town planning board meeting to order. It's a continuation of the meeting we started last month on the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park, public hearing. And I think the first thing that would be helpful is if there are any changes that the park committee would like to inform us of since the last meeting.
Rich, from Weston Sampson.
Sure, Rich Messer from Weston Sampson, as Bob mentioned. I just want to go over two key points from the last meeting. One of the things, we hadn't fully done the calculations on the stormwater controls, so I'll go over that. And the second thing is just to review quickly the Phase One construction components and how they are allocated for the site. So those two points. So first, let me go over the stormwater. What we've done is basically broken up the stormwater in three components. And the first phase of the construction also includes the first phase of stormwater controls. So the stormwater controls are basically made up of catch basins and water quality improvement structures and infiltration and detention structures. And so here, the water is contained from the library entrance as well as the new entrance, picked up with catch basins. There's an existing catch basin that's already here on the existing parking lot. We're going to tie into that, add a water quality improvement structure, and also a detention structure out in the grassed area, behind the basketball and tennis courts and the existing parking. So that's one component of the stormwater. The second component, which is for the full build-out, which is not part of Phase One, we're working and picking up stormwater from the synthetic multi-turf field and the pervious pavement parking lot. This whole area here is pervious pavement. So that stormwater that's not infiltrated in these, both of these units, is going to overflow into a second detention system. There's catch basins on the pervious pavement in case there's a large storm, so that it's not infiltrating, that you pick up that flow. Goes to detention system and goes in the easterly direction out into an existing swaled area. And the third component is tied into the pavilion entrance, the pavilion, and the area leading down to the pavilion, the access road, as well as the parking area. The parking areas themselves are pervious pavement. And the main entrance, as we discussed last time, is paved for winter access maintenance and plowing. And that will go to a system, again, to the west of the pavilion. It's got a component there to take the water, stormwater, from the pavilion, as well as the proposed skateboard park and the existing access road. And again, we're adding a water quality improvement structure to remove sediment and to improve the overall water quality. And eventually, the overall system ends in a small detention pond typically probably won't see any water, but as bigger storms, it will go to that point. So that is the overall stormwater control system for the complete build-out of the park. I'll just now quickly go over what is in the Phase One construction. I handed out a slightly revised, we've added some of the bullet points that were discussed last time. They were always part of Phase One, but they just weren't on the list, so they've been I've just tried to blacken out, it's actually clouded in on the actual plan, but the idea is that the first phase construction will go through a bidding process, and part of that bidding process is to identify what is actually included in the Phase One construction. So if you go down the list, we've also on the list added if it's in the town or village, so that relative to whatever the item is, this is the town and village property line boundary goes down diagonally, diagonally through the site. You can see, great, main parts of the Phase One construction is in the village, which includes the new entrance area, includes the new driveway to the library, some of the landscaping, the entry signs, some of the stormwater controls for the new 650 feet of paved surface area with lighting, as well as the stormwater structures that I mentioned earlier for the Phase One. And this, leading down, is where the two-inch water line, the temporary water line is going to extend from, from this main entrance down, going to the pavilion. And then with the pavilion, you have your leaching fields and your septic tank, all part of the Phase One construction, which is shown on this list. So I don't know if there's any other questions regarding that?
Members of either board, any questions?
Steve Cook had some concern about drainage at the library, does that resolve?
Yes, we have two catch basins that are shown right at the entrance that pick up that water and direct it down to the stormwater controls that will be built as part of Phase One.
Anything else from the committee? Okay. Before we open it up, the public comment, I have a few letters that were submitted that I'll read. Try to read. Okay. From Carol Straker, hope I get that right. "I can't attend to the meeting tonight, but would like my comments read into the record if possible. I have attended meetings with regard to this recreation park. As an educator and a fitness professional, I find it discouraging that a town like Rhinebeck, revered for so many things, fails to see the importance of providing more athletic fields for the community at large. Rhinebeck attracts many young families and continues to grow and be acclaimed as a wonderful place to raise your children. Healthy lifestyle habits, including healthy eating and physical activity, can lower the risk of becoming obese and developing related diseases. This is a fact, and we all know there is a major obesity epidemic among not only our youth, but our population at large. The dietary and physical activity behaviors of children and adolescents are influenced by many sectors of society, including families, communities, schools, childcare settings, medical care providers, faith-based institutions, government agencies, the media, and food and beverage industries, and entertainment industries. Here is an opportunity for this community to use the space as it was intended to be used, providing more fields than are currently being proposed, and further cultivating the importance of physical fitness, health, and benefits of team sports for our children and grandchildren. Many children are safe from drugs, depression, et cetera, because they become affiliated with sports. Simply share and use the space as it was intended in the original documents and do not lose sight of how important this will be to our children and future children, not to mention the adults. Watching your children and grandchildren engage in athletics is clearly a joy and certainly can be categorized under healthy lifestyle habit. Share the space, there's enough for all, walking trails, pavilions, green space, et cetera." And another from Lori Kiernan. "My name is Lori Kiernan, I grew up in Rhinebeck, and both my children attended Rhinebeck High School and played baseball. I am in the process of buying a condo at the gardens across the street from the rec park, and I'm excited to see the entire park, the trails, the garden, and even the pool. I love to be able to also stop by to watch some children's baseball games. I remember my husband and I ran around all over the place to watch some children's baseball games. Oops. I remember my husband and I ran around all over the place in convenient field locations in Rhinebeck when our kids were little. We figured that is what you do as parents, run ragged. It seems the town could really help its residents here and make their lives easier by providing a central location with plenty of playing fields for sports. This is so simple, I'm not sure why you aren't giving these athletic groups more playing fields at the rec park. They aren't asking for a sports complex, they are asking for a few fields. They deserve more fields, and you have plenty of space to give it to them. Secondly, the bathrooms that are to be added to the plan near the playground tennis court are not part of Phase One. I'm sorry, but the bathrooms near the playground and tennis court needs to be made a priority and made part of Phase One. It's ridiculous how far away people have to walk to use the bathroom." And this one is from Frank Selden. This is a long one. "I confess to not being fully familiar with the various committees and government entities engaged in the town park discussions. Someone suggested I start with you. If you are not the proper group, I trust you will afford my comments to those who are, and tell me how best to communicate with them. We moved to Rhinebeck almost five years ago, we chose this town because we thought it would be a great place to raise our children. We appear to have made a very wise choice. The schools and teachers are as good as advertised, and we've been able to work with administrators and the Board of Education to address whatever concerns have arisen. The sense of community is even more than we could have hoped. The number of people who volunteer massive amounts of their time to youth sports, the arts, et cetera, is incomprehensible to someone who wasn't raised here. We try to do as much as we can too, but even if we spent 100 hours a week, it would still be dwarfed by so many others. Halloween is just a few days away, trying to explain the pure joy of Halloween in Rhinebeck to someone who has never experienced it is simply impossible. We were concerned about the dark, cold, snowy winters, and have been pleasantly surprised by all the things the community has in store. We love all the green spaces, public and private in the area, and keep learning about more of them and more ways to enjoy them. Our local government is everything those of us raised in New York City or the suburbs think government can't possibly be: friendly, helpful, accessible, and responsive. We have an opportunity to make our town park all those things as well. Rhinebeck is a world-class, four-season community that puts its children and environment first. Our town park should exemplify that. I write this note because it appears that we've lost that focus on the town park design. My personal observation is that it may be time for a reset. I understand there are a lot of competing interests in designing a park and compromises need to be made by all, but we should never stop asking, is this park sending the message about our community that we want to send? I don't believe the current plan communicates what Rhinebeck is, it grossly undervalues what the town is about. Like everyone, I have my own ideas, I share them below, not to dictate the future, but to make my point about how the current plan underestimates our town, and in so doing sends a negative message to those who might consider living or visiting here. Pool, we have a very nice pool, it needs to be rethought, it lacks green space and places for families to congregate. The young children's pool is unappealing and uninviting. If we're going to invest in our park, we should raise the standard of our pool. Playground, we have a very nice playground too. We recently visited family in California and went to Dennis the Menace Park in Monterey. It shows what a playground can be. It has a much wider array of equipment that covers a much broader range, much broader age range. It is much better integrated into the environment with giant boulders, trees, and other plants serving as part of the playground. Whole families come and spend hours there, each enjoying different elements with common areas for picnics or other family activities. If we're going to invest in our park, we should invest in our playground, which probably means expanding it or maybe moving it. Summer recreation fields, there's apparently been a lot of debate about the number of fields. I don't know if the right number of fields is two, or three, or five. I don't think anyone knows until we see what the demand really is. More important to me is big, open, flat, mowed green spaces. I hear way too much discussion about structured sports fields and not enough about flexible green space. The local leagues certainly need space to practice and play games, but equally important is space for small groups of kids, families, to come and make up their own games. Kids need a place to bring a soccer ball and play monkey in the middle, or throw shirts on the ground and play small-sided games. Many adults will quickly come to join them, touch football, running races, lacrosse, stickball, et cetera. With lots of flexible space, the local leagues can use cones to mark fields, or maybe paint chalk, or just for their respective seasons. Putting up a small shed to store equipment would be easy. With that in mind, I would reconsider the artificial turf field. It would likely turn into an incursion on the common space, not a compliment to it. Why would a town that wants to showcase its environment put up an artificial turf field? I also wonder about the additional baseball diamonds. Do we really need dedicated space for one activity, or would the community be better served by flexible space that can support all activities? The hillside, the hillside that goes down behind the current baseball field is an incredible space. What a magnificent great lawn it would make. It is a gorgeous natural amphitheater. What an incredible spot it would be to have concerts or fireworks on the Fourth of July. What an incredible spot it would be to have a picnic, or lay on a blanket and watch the clouds go by, see the unbelievable colors of spring and fall, or watch the sunset over the Catskills. What a grand and glorious statement that would make about our community and what we stand for, not to mention that it would become the new spot for sledding in the winter. A reason for families to come to our park that is now completely unused during the winter months. Once they're for sledding, I'm quite sure much of that wide-open flat space discussed above will become a kingdom of snowmen, snow forts, et cetera. These are just one person's ideas. Most important is that we have an opportunity to make our town park in the image of the wonderful community that we are. We have an opportunity to make our town park not only fully functional to a much wider audience, but also to make it a showplace that declares we are Rhinebeck, and we believe in community, family, children, and our environment. If we do it right, that message will be heard by all those who live here, those who might consider living here, and those who visit and might visit again and/or recommend us to others. Let's make sure we don't let this chant slip away. Thank you for your consideration." Do you want to read some of these?
Sorry, getting interrupted.
Someone's car is blocking someone's driveway.
Oh, okay. Gray pickup truck blocking my driveway at 10 Center Street, and I need to get out? Shall I carry on, or would you like to carry on?
You're reading faster than I could read. Unless you talk.
It was last night's practice, it was a very long meeting. Okay. This is Carol Urban, sent this to the town planning board. "Thank you for conducting an excellent joint hearing with the village planning board on the 17th. I urge you to preserve the great lawn as the park plan develops. Please don't let one vocal segment of the community result in a park that is essentially a youth sports center. I also encourage you to consider the proposal to add permanent restrooms near the pool. The Star Library should not have to serve as their park restroom. Thank you." And, last but not least, from Charles Jacob. "Thank you for taking the time to speak to me yesterday. I will be out of town Monday, and so can't attend the meeting. Here are my thoughts, concerns, which I preface by saying that we generally love having the park as a neighbor, and we use it ourselves. I definitely understand the need to have some more ball fields, but it would be a shame if the open rural feel of that part of the park were less than too much. There's a lot of traffic on this stretch of West Market, Reincliffe Road, as it is, so the amount of new usage added should be considered. The plan to add restrooms south of the tennis courts raises a concern as to folks wandering with good intent or not into the Scholdorfs Field, and by extension, our property. We have a fence between our property and the park, but the Scholdorfs do not, so that should be considered. Also, what would the septic situation be? Especially in view of the lighting situation, as it is, thought should be given to not adding any more lighting than absolutely needed. I'm not sure that the right form for this next part is, but the existing lighting at the park is a problem for us in a couple of ways. First, it is left on way later than the park is used, especially in the winter. It could be turned off at, say, 7:00 p.m., but it seems to be always on until at least 10:00 p.m. Second, there is way too much lighting to the extent that it's being used for security considerations, rather than actually lighting sports usage, of which there is none in the evenings once the summer is over. Third, many of the lights are pointed directly at our property, such that the light pollution is not too strong a term, especially in the winter when there are no leaves on the trees. If someone from the village or town came over to our house on a non-summer evening after dark and looked at the situation, I think the conclusion would quickly be that the money is being wasted on electricity at the same time that the semi-rural character there is being adversely affected by too much artificial light. Thanks for listening to that part, and if there is someone else I should speak to about this, I'd be happy to do so. I honestly think it's a win-win because the village and the town could save money on the electricity at the same time." And that's from Charles Jacob.
Where do they live? It says Lexington Avenue in New York. Where do they live here?
I think right there on Waltz, that little road there. Yeah, I think.
Where Mary Myers was.
Yeah. Okay. From Anne Marie Ebbing and Marie Farrell?
Yeah.
Okay, these were handed to me. Okay. "Dear Town Board, I wish to post my concern that there has been inadequate public accessibility of this major undertaking to design the park. For such a large proposal, I had anticipated a demonstration model to be published in the local papers, or posted at a common viewing place in the village, or perhaps more efficaciously via email. While I absolutely see the need for preserved open space and have supported such endeavors in the past, the town of Rhinebeck is much in need of space for children's playing fields, soccer, baseball, skateboarding park, and a safe skating rink, as well as safe bike paths and playing fields for adult athletes as well. This can be accomplished in an ecologically sound way with reduced environmental impact and not detract from the open space. I anticipate that this is a big, important undertaking we share with the Rhinebeck community at large in a way that is accessible to all of us. Thank you for acknowledgement of my post." And I think, this is the last one. "My name is Marie Farrell, I'm a member of the Garden Club. I like to see our Garden Club expand. I'm also mother of four grown children who are active in sports in Rhinebeck. Many people seem to think that these athletic groups are trying to take away from what others have carved out for themselves at the rec park. I don't hear them saying that at all. I hear these groups supporting the Garden Club, I hear soccer, baseball, lacrosse support each other, I've heard them support the library, I've heard them say that they are going to volunteer their time, volunteer their resources, and volunteer to build the fields themselves. They aren't even asking for taxpayer money, yet they are taxpayers who paid for the park to begin with. Don't they deserve a piece of the proverbial pie too? Why aren't their voices being heard? We need a central location for sports in Rhinebeck. What they're asking for is reasonable. They aren't asking for a sports complex, they're asking for a few more playing fields, give it to them. There's plenty of space here for all of us. As a Garden Club member, I'd be thrilled to pick my organic tomatoes and cucumbers and take a walk on the trails, and maybe even watch a soccer game winding up the evening. They are trying to do a good thing, support them, I support them, they're supporting the rest of us. Let the children run through the fields, keep them occupied with a convenient place to play sports, it is their town." Yes. And I believe that's it for written comments. Do we have a, is the list over there still of people who wish to speak? I assume it is.
Behind the. Hm? Oh, behind the bathroom. Huh? Oh.
Patrick should leave her comments. I'll save here. Okay, our first speaker is Liliana Barillas. Hope I got that right?
Yes. Let me see. All right. Maybe I'll just pick it up. I'm more comfortable like this. Anyways, my name is Liliana Barillas, and I moved to Rhinebeck two years ago. And, you know, when I was in the process of moving to the town, I was doing my search in the internet, and I found a comment that really stuck in my head at that time. And there was a young family just like us, you know, moving to the area and asking about Rhinebeck, and someone else is answering back and saying, you know, oh, Rhinebeck is a great town for young families, you know, the school district is excellent, there's a lot of culture, there's great restaurants, but if your kids are into sports, you're better off moving to Red Hook. And, you know, it really bothered me because I like sports. And, you know, I'm a pediatrician also, and I really advocate for sports for children. You know, I think it's a very important habit to get them into. I think it's not about only physical health, but also mental health. And I was hoping that my kids would participate in sports. Anyways, I love Rhinebeck, and I decided to move to Rhinebeck. But when I moved in, I started having new friends, I started asking, what is it with Red Hook? Is that they eat better, or what's up with Red Hook? Anyways, they told me, you know, no, you know, the district is bigger, there's more kids, so there's a larger pool of athletes, and they're just better in sports, which makes sense. But they also, I had other people tell me, you know, the town is just more friendly towards sports. You know, they have better facilities, they have a recreational park, they have more fields. And, you know, so anyways, I'm not too worried, my kids are just five and three, you know, they're little. But when I heard about the recreational park in Rhinebeck, I said, yes, I did the right decision, I'm going to the right town. And then, one of these days, I'm reading in The Observer, a comment. You know, I see this comment about someone mentioning 82 acres, that there were planned to be 17 acres for, you know, for the recreational park. Now it's down to five. And you guys know better than this, I really don't know anybody here. I'm just, you know, I read this, and I thought I needed to educate myself more. And I went into this, and I searched a little bit, I asked around different families. And I'm really troubled about this, because I feel, you know, you read all these comments, it's obvious, I think that the community is really asking for this. And I think that, I am originally from Costa Rica, so we love nature in Costa Rica, so I don't see how this cannot be balanced a little bit more. You know, it's not about not having open space, I think that's great, but we have space to make a better recreational park, and this is a golden opportunity to make the right thing for the kids. You know, all the things you heard about there, more fields, better turf area, all these things are not just a luxury. I think it's a need for a community where younger families are moving, we have to realize this and accept it, and hopefully embrace it. And the kids are really the future of the community, so we give them a message by this. You know, we really are kind of telling them a message when we don't do what we should be doing. And I feel that this should be considered again, and it should, you know, everybody wants this to go on. You know, I've had friends, and I asked this, and everybody was very quiet about it, some people were like, oh, we just want Phase One to start, and, you know, I understand that. But if we don't start it, and we don't make it well from the beginning, it's not going to happen. You know, I'm doing, I want to do an addition in my house, and the architect told me, you have to have your wish list before you start building, because if not, it's not going to happen. So I think that, I'm really hoping here, I took my time to come here, because I hope that the town members are listening to the community, because I have a feeling that it's not happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Murray?
Hi again. Linda Murray, town of Rhinebeck residence. I'd like to adjust the conservation easement on the property. First, the property is owned by the town, but Winnekee Land Trust is the guardian of a conservation easement on the property, which gives them oversight and changes to the property. Once the site plan map is signed and stamped, the town must have Winnekee's prior approval to change anything on the site plan. This isn't my opinion, the easement reads in part as follows. "No improvement or substantial change to the property shall be made until plans for the work are submitted to and approved in writing by the grantee, Winnekee. For compliance with the proposed structure, substantial change, or improvement with the restrictions contained in this conservation easement, no land shall be excavated or cleared or work commenced prior to the grantee's written approval." That's 3.14 of the easement. "Sports groups have been asking for more fields for nearly a year now. I personally have attended more than two dozen meetings asking for this. I'm not sure why, but there seems to be a misconception in our community that individual sports groups must provide the town with their own individual needs analysis to get more playing fields. This is incorrect. Sports groups don't need to do their own studies, nor have they been asked to. Professionals have already done these studies in our town. The LA Group, a renowned design firm, provided the town with an environmental analysis, land planning, and civil engineering service years ago, and studied the needs of Rhinebeck's community vis-à-vis the rec park. Their study is what the master plan and environmental assessment form analysis was based on. Their studies support having more playing fields than are currently on the plan before you. The LA Group put together the master plan document that our town is guided by today." That's, I guess I must have left it at my, oh, here. The LA Group has the entire study of what was done years ago for this project, that's before you. The LA Group concluded after their studies that the rec park would fulfill a longstanding need in our community for additional playing fields and additional recreation, stating, quote, "New recreational fields will take 17 acres of agriculture out of production." That's page two. "It appears that 17 acres was not a number pulled out of nowhere. If you divide 17 by 84, the size of the park, the number is 20 percent. At the time the LA Group did their study, it found that Rhinebeck had 21 acres of recreation per thousand. Meanwhile, National Rec and Park Association recommends 21.25 to 30.5 acres per thousand. Rhinebeck fell on the dismally low end of providing recreation for its community. Presumably, expansion of the park was going to bring these numbers up. Despite all these studies, the park committee has proposed only 5.4 acres of playing fields on 84 acres. That means this project is proposing less than 5% of space towards a new active recreation playing fields. In addition to these professional studies that were done, unsolicited, Rhinebeck Soccer League decided it would update the town in December 2012, and they explained that they had a current need for more fields. Lacrosse did a similar thing, they told the town that they had no designated fields to play on. Lacrosse was actually denied access this summer to the schools' fields to hold a tournament, because the school fields, understandably, needed to be rested from overuse. I'm not sure if you know that. Confusedly, the needs analysis that the town has paid for is being ignored, and we can't seem to get an explanation as to why it's not being addressed. Again, I've personally attended over two dozen meetings over the past year to ask or even understand why more playing fields are not depicted on the current plan, when the needs analysis the town paid for shows that Rhinebeck is supposed to have more. Again, this isn't my opinion, I've merely culled these facts from the documents in Town Hall. Simply put, we've pleaded that a simple notation be added to the site plan map, denoting areas where future playing fields could be built in the future. Not to be built necessarily today, or tomorrow, but sometime in the future. This request has been rebuffed. But why? If the town truly intends to fulfill these needs, why such opposition today, when a needs analysis establishing these needs was already done? I've personally pleaded with you, Sally, that we find some middle ground where everyone's needs could be met at the rec park. You've rebuffed me, too. I struggle to understand why. I love open space, I love Rhinebeck. I toil to understand why putting a note on the map that future fields will be constructed in areas at the rec park is so off-putting, or why we ask, or why what we ask for has affected. You've rebuffed me too. I struggle to understand why. I love open space, I love Rhinebeck. I toil to understand why putting a note on the map that future fields will be constructed in areas at the rec park is so off-putting, or why we ask, or why what we ask for has offended some of you. So for those of you who trust that we can easily change this rec park plan in the future, I ask you this. If we're having this sort of struggle to have a note put on a map now, even though the town has in its possession the studies to support the need today, as denoted by the LA Group and memorialized in the park's master plan, how can we truly trust that once this map is stamped without playing fields, that Winnicke will give its prior written approval for changes to the property? That won't do it now, they won't do it now, and they have studies in their hands to support doing it. Finally, I'm constrained to address the conflict of interest of having the rec park committee's design team led by the president of Winnicke and that there might be, there might be Winnicke board members voting on this project tonight, I'm not sure. Winnicke received money when the easement was conveyed, conveyed, which means that there exists a financial interest in this project. Winnicke's land trust's mission, public mission statement is to preserve open space and expand walking trails. This should not be the mission statement for our rec park, yet Phase One of our rec park, our only rec park, seemingly is being led in design by Winnicke's president and has no playing fields being constructed for use by our kids in Phase One. We all benefit from the beauty of open space. At the same time, ensuring that our children and even adults are engaged in rigorous physical activity, living healthy, and have access to youth development and safety should be equally, if not more important than preserving open space. We have plenty of space there to incorporate playing fields with open space on eighty-four acres. I ask again, please acknowledge your community and just give us a note on the map that memorializes areas reserved for new recreational fields. It's a stroke of a pen and you'll make so many people feel heard. I say this knowing that there are at least three town board members in the audience today and the town board created the park committee and you can direct them what, how you want this plan to proceed. Sorry, there's four board members. That's my conclusion, however, on Friday, I was in Town Hall because I wanted to review the planning board file and I had the wherewithal back in December to grab copies of things that were being passed out by other people at the meeting and I noticed some things weren't in the file and I'd like to provide copies again. One was the needs analysis that Rhinebeck Soccer League provided at the December meeting. I'll hand that up again. Fortunately, I have copies. Also, a letter that I submitted that day, dated December seventeenth, I didn't see it in the file. Also, a letter from a lawyer that was submitted that night, dated December seventeenth. The petition was also missing from the file, we're working on getting copies of it replaced for you.
Take it over to the clerk. Okay, we have no one else signed up to speak, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes.
Hi, I'm Joanne Gilb, I live in the village, no relation to Jo. I have a couple of questions. Didn't our girls, was it softball team, were they champs of what, the county or the state champs? Two years in a row? Wow, so I hope that puts your mind at rest, not only do we have sports, we have champion sports here.
Soccer champions.
And soccer champion sports with the existing fields as they are. I'm not saying yeah or no, I'm just letting you know. And can you, can somebody tell me, how many fields do we have at the schools? We have fields at the schools and there's another park down by the recycling center where there are fields?
Stone Church.
Stone Church, right, so there are fields. I just, from the letters and the comments, it sounded very dire and that our children weren't getting activity in sports. I also think maybe, you know, if we're doing these numbers and everything, then perhaps we need to change the pool and give fifty percent of the time to seniors, because right now, they don't get any, any time and we have to go around the children's schedule. While the children are our future, we were children once and here we are. And some of us adults need some activity and some time and some activities and, and appropriate space. That's, that's all for now, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I want to thank Linda Murray, my sister-in-law. She's not here for personal gain, I think she really has taken on, single-handedly, what she feels is truly right, in this case, it's not about not having a place to play soccer, but many of us, myself included, would love to spend money and time, sweat equity, improving things. It's, it's difficult to want to give money and spend it for fields we don't physically own, so the, the idea of having a rec park that we can invest in, money and time and people can go to and say, this is our rec park, I'd love a bigger pool. You're entirely right about the use of the pool and, and I'll help you champion that this year. My wife and my in-laws have said the same thing many times. For that reason, we belong to the Red Hook pool. It's, it's, it has more time and access and I know you've heard that before. Back to Linda, I think, I, I am one person in many, for example, who doesn't really enjoy sticking my neck out, aggravating people, Sally, it's not fun. I mean, I have many, many friends and I want to keep them all. So I, I, I encourage you all not to see her as a demon, but instead as the single person in this community who feels very, very strongly about something and she's, she's tried very desperately over twelve months to bring some very clear documents to light and, and I know that most people have not read these documents, so I encourage the, the entire town to please find something that works, you know, all work together, the swimming pool, the fields, the walking, we're all going to enjoy them and, and it's a beautiful town and we all enjoy living here. Thank you, board members, for your volunteer time.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else? Sally.
First, I'd like to say it's very upsetting for me to hear about Winnicke Land Trust in a way that is extremely negative. I don't think anyone here, including myself, has the ability to say what decision Winnicke Land Trust would make if the town presented to them a plan that would be modified from what we're looking at today, if that comes three years, five years, ten years down the road. No one here is able to state what that decision would be, what that decision would be. But just a reminder that that easement is really a, while it's a conservation easement, it's also formed for recreation. It was the first time that Duchess County acknowledged and put money aside for recreation in any community. And it was the same approach that Winnicke took in addressing that the community needed recreation and would adjust the conservation easement so it could address recreational needs. So just to clarify that, it's not a pure conservation easement that we typically work on and it has been an absolute pleasure working with the town and seeing this activity grow. And also to note that the decisions that are made by the park committee are made by many people. Our chairman, Bob Ellsworth, has put a lot of energy and time into leading the organization. So just to clarify that, I am not the head of any design team, we never talk about a design team. It's a joint effort by a number of members of the community that put in a lot of volunteer time. Another issue I'd like to clarify, it, it's been discussed tonight that the LA Group in working on the master plan, addressed the recreational needs for the community and this seventeen acres that is constantly brought up. I'd like to clarify for the planning boards that the LA Group, in looking at this plan, this has always been the area that's been designated for recreational purposes and those recreational purposes are very, very diverse. And nothing beyond where the pavilion has been sited was ever noted for recreation except for the trail network that goes around the perimeter of the entire park. So the seventeen acres is really this area in there that encompasses our trails, it encompasses the community garden, it encompasses the fields that have been proposed, as, as well as the trail network. So this is really the development area that the LA Group proposed and that's pretty much consistent and in the spirit of what the planning boards are reviewing today. So I, you know, we've heard so often about the seventeen acres, this is the seventeen acres right here.
Sally, can I just ask a question of clarification?
Sure.
I believe that the conservation easement was held in concert with Duchess County, is it not?
Correct.
So it's, I think that that's something that maybe many people don't understand. It's held by both Winnicke and Duchess County, I think the Department of Planning and Development actually oversees it as far as that is concerned. I know that when we have submitted for the master plan and for Phase One, as we do under General Mutual Law 2339, the responses from Duchess County, which comes from Planning and Development, have been matter of local concern. They have not raised any issues or concerns about what's been proposed. So, I don't know if John wants to enlarge on that, but we take that to mean that we have to use our judgment that the county, as one of the holders of the easement, has no concern about what is proposed either in the master plan or in Phase One, as that sits before us tonight.
Robert.
Robert Murray. I could be mistaken, but I'd encourage you to check, I think the county approved of the easement appropriately as a contingency for the funding, but I think Winnicke is the grantee.
We are the grantee.
So, so there is no...
Duchess County participated in signing.
You could, I remember when I called and spoke to the Duchess County Planning Board and, and I had a, it seemed to be a sensitive subject, probably by the time when it was done, because I know the, the easement was amended a few times, but I was told almost immediately, there is no agricultural issue on that land and, and not much more really. But that, at that point, I had started to read it, that was a year ago. But I, but I think, I still want to encourage you all, it's, it's not a complicated issue. The seventeen acres actually, Sally, you're right, I think, because I measured it, everything to the north of the hedgerow, if you add it all up, including this future community center area and what is a garden, what is, what are the archaeologically sensitive areas, the parking lots, in entirety, it's seventeen acres, but most of it untouchable or unusable for recreation space because things like, and I'm, I'm expecting, the village and the town is still thinking, considering that a, a community center will go there in the future, not a soccer field up on the road. So again, I want, I'd love to encourage everyone, I think it's easy and I think Winnicke will continue to be a good partner in maintaining a responsible space and recreation park and meeting the community's needs. Thanks.
Thank you, Robert. Yes. Linda, if you could just wait a minute?
I would just like to ask, because I don't know everybody here, Mr. Murray that just spoke, are you a town or village resident?
I'm neither, I'm a Duchess County resident.
Okay, so when you said earlier that with money that you were willing to put towards it, are you talking about private donations?
Can you imagine?
We, we, you have to, one at a time, address the board, we don't want a public discussion between people, members of the audience.
Okay, sorry. Just wondered, because I don't, I, I really don't know how the funding goes, whether it's out of our taxes and Rhinebeck taxes or Duchess County taxes and I'm not sure when certain people are speaking, whether they're talking about an offering of private donation.
Well, yeah, mostly, yeah.
Thank you for raising an interesting point. First, as a current resident of the Town of Clinton, I am ready to write a check for materials, I'm ready to move my construction equipment to help do things, I've done so. This is not about money either, no one is asking the town for money, we're asking for permission to use land that is owned by the town and village. It's a great misconception when we, I, I participated in gathering signatures for support of additional soccer fields, many people said, wait, 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 what is this about? Is this about money? Like, I don't want my taxes to go up. It's a natural reaction and I think whether it's a expanded swimming pool or soccer field or, or a pavilion, everyone should be concerned about money. To the best of my knowledge, in the last twelve months, it's never been about anyone wanting the town or village to pay for rec fields, just to have permission to develop something that's permanent.
Thank you, Robert. Linda?
Just two points. One, with the seventeen acres, I, I just have to go back to that because I'm going to read it right from the master plan, it says, "The new recreation fields will take approximately seventeen acres of active agricultural lands out of production." It doesn't say anything about trails or open fields, it's new recreation fields. The second thing is, is when was the last time this was circulated to Duchess County Planning?
It was circulated, I, we have, we have the form back, it was, what, one or two months ago when we finally got to Phase One? It's in the file and you have these, you have the response from Duchess County Planning in there.
Okay, because I was in, I was in Town Hall on Friday, I didn't see any recent correspondence.
Well, it wasn't recent, it was a couple of months ago when we did the initial circulation.
Okay, I didn't see anything from 2013 in the file.
The reference is in there, both the sending it to them...
And it was circulated in connection with...
With Phase One.
So was the old EAF from 2009 circulated with it?
It was updated, it was looked at and it was, I believe it was updated by the committee and that did go around as well.
When, I'm sorry, when did the planning board update the expanded EAF? I, I mean, I, I'm sure I've been at every meeting, did I miss something?
The planning board, the planning board doesn't expand the EAF, the applicant, if they feel their changes, do part one.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was lead agency, the lead agency is town board, when, when was that?
The applicant, the applicant does part one, okay? Not, not the reviewing agency or the lead agency, the applicant does part one of the long EAF.
But that's the town, that's the town board, so we're referring to the park committee, but really the applicant is the town and that's the town board. I've been to every meeting of the town board and the planning board on this project, I don't recall a time that this was circulated or that the expanded EAF was revised, I'm sorry, it is, maybe I'm wrong, maybe...
What I think you need to do, because I was looking at the file last week as well and the documents of circulation to county planning are in there as well as the response on Phase One.
And that was an updated expanded EAF that was updated by the town board?
It was what the, it was what the committee felt was appropriate for Phase One.
So is there an expa, a newly revised expanded EAF that, that, that's not in the town file? Because I've, I've looked, I've looked.
My understanding is the EAF, which was circulated for the master plan, was reviewed by the committee... was reviewed by the committee, and that, they found that to be adequate.
Oh, so you're talking about the EAF from 2009? That was six years ago?
Correct.
Okay, so the expanded EAF from six years ago is relying upon a plan from 2009?
They seem to feel there wasn't any necessary to change it.
Sorry, four years ago?
They seem to feel there was no reason to change it.
Okay, but the plan has substantially changed since 2009, right?
I don't see that it has substantially changed since 2009.
Well, the septic, right? The septic has changed.
And I believe, as you recall, that was discussed by the town board during Part Two
Oh, it wasn't discussed when I was present? No, no, it was, I brought it up, but when I was president, it wasn't.
I know.
Okay, I just wanted clarification. So just, there's been no newly revised expanded EAF since 2009?
For Phase One.
For Phase One. It's the same one from 2009?
It was found to be adequate.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
You know, I honestly didn't know this whole mess. I have no idea what is the politics behind this. To answer your question, I, you know, I'm sure that there's great themes. I'm not saying that there's no great themes, but I do think, I'm just saying, I actually ask you, if you go and Google moving to Rhinebeck, you'll find this comment, because it really, it's something very common in the young families. Everybody knows, like, the Red Hook area is just better for sports. And it can change, and, you know, and I don't think it has to be, you know, I don't think we have to be so divided in this. You know, I think it's a little bit of compromise. I don't see why it's so complicated, you know? And I agreed with the pool, you know? I had to become a member of the Red Hook pool this summer because my father-in-law likes to swim, and we just cannot swim there. But then your argument actually should be here, you know, trying to get a pool. I will, I will help you do that. But not saying that the kids take over the pool. The kids, they're innocent here. You know, they don't take over anything. It's just that we don't have an appropriate pool. And that's not their fault. And I think that this is the whole thing, you know? Our kids have no fault with this. And whatever these personal issues that you all guys have, because I don't know what are the issues here, our kids are the ones who's going to suffer with this. And I know there's fields in the fairgrounds, and I go to the stone church. It's not that there's no fields. It's that the ideal of having recreational parks is that we can have a centralized place that will be easier for all of us. You know, I have two kids, and if they're both playing sports, it'll be just easier for all of us to be in the same area, safer for the kids. I, you know, I've been doing my research, you know, I'm naive, but not that dumb. And I looked into comments from before, and I saw someone who was even concerned about some rehab center close to the park. You know, the more kids, the more families we have there, the safer the park is going to be. You know, and I think this can be a compromise. You know, I don't see why we cannot, I think that all those emails that you got there, and someone like me, who I have nothing, no interest here. My kids are not even fully into sports, they're just starting to play. All this people in the community, all we want is a little balance here, that we just balance it for everyone. And I agree for senior citizens also, we need to have more options. My mom is a senior citizen. She exercises, I'm sure she's going to love the trails. But I feel that there's an imbalance. Eighty-four acres and only five acres? It's, something is just making no sense. And I think we can, we should just get together and think this a little bit better and stop all the fighting and who's, you know? And I'm sure this lady here, that I just met her daughter recently, I didn't even know them. I think that's, it's great that all she wants is the best. Everybody wants the best for the community, but maybe we just need to balance a little bit things. And, you know, I hope it's a positive last comment.
Thank you. Anyone else, yes?
Hi, Brett. I'm a resident of the town for the last twenty-two years. I'm also on the town rec park for the last year. And when I discovered they were doing this, this park, I was very excited because I lived here for twenty-two years, and I didn't really know there was anything going on down there. So I took a couple of walks down there, it was pleasant surprise to see that this thing was going to actually develop quite nicely and develop along the lines that it would actually be quite diverse. My four daughters that grew up in the village played sports. Couple played varsity soccer, very competitive against Red Hook, I might add. Another daughter played tennis. The third daughter was mostly a cheerleader. So by example, they were pursuing diverse activities. They weren't all wed to one particular sport, nor was I. I play rugby, I play soccer, I play hockey, I play tennis. I like to jog, I like to bike, and I certainly like to walk the trails with my dog. So diversity is kind of key. And I would not be happy to see, as a town resident, that park just plastered with a single set of fields. If you go through Red Hook, you'll see that they got a huge field for football, a huge field for girls lacrosse. Their pool actually complex is actually quite minimal from my point of view, so I'm kind of surprised on the comments of the pool. But again, the comment I would like to make here is, there seems to be a lot, much ado about nothing here. We've got a plan to act, we have to start acting. I'm frustrated because I'm on the committee for a year. There's been people on the committee for nine years. So if you think a minor change is not going to slow this down, you're wrong. It'll cause a delay in a year, easily a year, maybe two years. Let's get cracking, folks, we've got to move this thing forward. We really do. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing, no further comment? Anything from the members of the board?
I just have a quick question, maybe this has been done. We're talking about eighty-four acres and seventeen acres for fields, which seems like nothing. Has anybody computed, you know, eighty-four acres minus the number of acres of parking and roadways and, you know, cliffs and, you know, land that's totally impossible to use for anything? You know, so it's not really eighty-four acres that we could use for, you know, a particular activity? Has any of that been...
Yeah, you had something done.
Yeah, it has been done.
It has been done, okay.
Broken down, every part of it.
But, you know, I'm just saying...
The results of the wetlands and...
Right, the wetlands and so forth.
...ecologically, or archeological, that's huge.
Yeah, you know, and I'm not saying, you know, I support one thing or another. It's just that it's not quite what it sounds like. Seventeen acres is nothing out of eighty-four, but it's not really eighty-four acres of just open land.
Okay. Yes? Question? Someone have a question?
No, down there. Turn around.
I'm sorry?
Would you have a question?
I have an observation. I read this document that's a resolution relative to secret determination. And I think the key thing that most people in this room have not focused on, it says here that the development of the park is set forth within the limits of the financial resources presently available. Think about that. They're not building an empire because they don't have the money to build an empire. Utilize the monies they have to do the best they can with the funds, period.
I'd like to comment on that. Thank you, Wood, for bringing that up. And I segue into, really, the only issue I'd like to bring up tonight. That little clause was added in at our last joint meeting. It's not something that's been there forever. We threw that in there because it explained why Phase One has changed so massively. I mean, Phase One was $1.8 million, I think, back in our master plan and subsequent plans. I mean, I'm holding, I'm holding a letter here to the Thomas Thompson trustees, 2008, September 17th, that breaks down Phase One. $1.844 million, Phase One. So it's changed a lot, I agree. And the financial, the finances available to our community are absolutely critical. And I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into making the plan and making it work and... But the one big problem that I have, and I would like the committee perhaps to offer some kind of an explanation, is all the documents that I go through have reasonable numbers placed on them. And the one number I keep seeing over and over again is a bathroom and concession stand, and it always hovers right around $150,000. I haven't seen any recent figures for the building that's going in place now, and it seems to be taking a priority. But the last meeting we had, someone said, well, the last, last I heard, it was somewhere around $350,000, but it wasn't finished yet. So my question is very simple. If we, if we're aiming for putting in a simple restroom and concession stand, and I think it's not unreasonable to say $150,000, it's certainly enough to accomplish that, why then wouldn't we put that on hold or do something more modest and take the other monies that we apparently have available and divert then the $200,000 over to, applying it to the development of a couple of other parts of the park, rather than put it all into the one which seems excessive? Bob? Sally? Why has it grown so large in cost?
As it designed, as it designed.
And I'm sorry, also, do we have an estimate, a current estimate of the cost for the structure?
Yes, we do. Frank has the current estimate of the pavilion. As we developed the pavilion, the pavilion started out as a very simple structure. And we felt that we should have some type of structure down there that was applicable to the park, something that can show, you know, what could be had as a pavilion down there in Rhinebeck, something like that. So as we designed it, it grew in cost, like anything. Once you start designing something, you know, it starts out very small. And of course, what happens is, when the design comes through, you know, you've got to, you have to take in consideration that more things are doing. We're trying to do a lot of natural things as far as using natural wood and everything like that. So yes, the design has grown, but it's, the design is, the cost has grown because the design, excuse me, the design has changed. I mean, like anything, when you go to, you start out, you have a philosophy or a cost. But that was before we even had a design. Now we have a design, and the cost is raised. I mean, you know...
Thank you, thank you. And I agree with you 100%. As you start out, things seem pretty straightforward. And as you can see with all the interest of the local forums and the people who are here tonight, things change. And I think it's very important that the town stop and take a look and take the opportunity to realize what Bob just said, things change. So rather than put up something that might not look all that great for Rhinebeck, they had to change it a little bit, and it costs a little bit more. The same with the people who are here tonight, the pool, excellent idea. I agree, I think there should be a second pool. There should be, and it should really be thought out so that over the next five years or something, there's a nice complex and it's tasteful. The gardens should be expanded. My understanding is you can't get in there right now. And those things should be incorporated into the plan, and I think it's in the best interest of the town to make sure that's thought out now. As someone said earlier, I thought that was fantastic. You've got to get your wish list before you just start building your house, because you can't just start building it, and you'll end up with, you know, oh, I wish I had made this a little bit bigger.
Yes?
We've had the cost growth, we, you know, that happens, and we're working through that. We've also had some cost savings. There's many things in that first list that was there that have been done that are costing much less. The pavilion by the pool, as an example, that's $100,000 less than it says in the plan. We're not moving the basketball court, so we're saving money with that. There's things that we're doing trade-offs, so it's not as Wild West as some people may think. So we are trying to balance it, and we are getting savings.
Thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, but to respond to that, I think the issue really was that nothing is being done for sports while this money is being spent right now. I realize infrastructure, no infrastructure for sports fields, but infrastructure is being put in place for the field house, but not for the fields. Not for sports fields, no electric out to the baseball fields, nothing like that. And again, my point was very simply, rather than buy the Cadillac out in this pavilion, why not put up a modest bathroom concession stand, which has been proposed? I'm not aware of any alternate design proposals, but why not put something a little more modest and use the money to be a little, distributed a little more equally? That's all.
Gina?
I'm Gina Fox, I'm on the town board. And as you can tell by my appearance, I didn't plan on speaking tonight. I'm, but I've been upset by things that Ms. Murray has both sent out in the press. Before we had our meeting on Monday, she sent a letter accusing us of having a secret meeting, which of course it was not, and accusing people of having conflict of interests and not recusing themselves when her husband, Richard, does such a great job on the planning board, but yet there is an obvious conflict of interest many times over. But in a small town, people have different hats and wear different hats. And I have had four children come through that all were athletes in all different sports and have lived through this for years. And I think that the park people have done a tremendous job about bringing together a diverse group of needs in this. And there are fields there, there are soccer fields there. It's not that there are none, there is a soccer field there. And I just polled the soccer boys, the varsity that were going to play in Marlboro, and they said, the soccer boys said, the majority wanted more baseball fields. So you can't really, I think you've got, guys are doing a great job. And just keep going, and the naysayers and the negative people need to kind of take a step back.
Thank you. Christian?
My name is Christian Feketem, I'm the only officer in town Rhinebeck. I just wanted to address Mr. Murray's comment here. I personally think that the park is a great idea. I am a little less enthused about the sports aspect of it. On the contrary, I am very enthusiastic about the pavilion and the ability that the structure has to provide a place for people to relax, enjoy the park, enjoy the vistas in a, in an outdoor structure that is, that would have a sculptural aspect that Rhinebeck would benefit from because of its architecture and of its great appeal to the people of the community. I would love to go and enjoy a beautiful architecture at the same time as I enjoy the nature around. I am less enthusiastic about the sports focus because I agree, I think that we have enough sports fields around, and so I am very much in favor with the design of the pavilion.
Thank you.
Just to clarify my position on that, just to, I, Mr. Mazarello's design is fantastic. I have no question, it's so far superior than what was originally proposed. There's no question, there's no doubt, anyone's mind that is. It's really just a matter of cost, and we have the money right now to go for the Cadillac, that's all.
Elizabeth?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Spinzio, I'm on the town board, I'm, of course, Rhinebeck resident. I want to speak to the cost of the pavilion. We're getting a grant from the county towards this, isn't that correct? $100,000, it can't be diverted to field infrastructure. I think we, part of this is to get this through so we can get that grant money. So I think we have a modestly priced and beautiful pavilion, and we can't divert funds. It's sort of earmarked by the nature of the grant. Is that accurate?
Well, hang on, it's a $100,000 matching block grant. So the town, well, they will give us $100,000... So the town will, they will give us a hundred thousand and we will chip in our own hundred thousand. So you do the math, that's two hundred thousand, so we have a very nice pavilion slash bathroom concession for two hundred thousand. So I'm talking about a whole nother two hundred thousand dollars. And I'm sorry, I still didn't hear the, the current cost. Can you throw that in? Current cost of the pavilion right now?
The first phase is three hundred and twenty.
All right, so great, accurate, first phase. So three hundred and twenty, so it's an extra hundred, it's, it's, it's a, it's a luxury. And I agree, it's a beautiful building. My question was, and please, I want to make sure I'm clear. Is it necessary to spend the extra for the Cadillac? Or should we perhaps use the money since we're in such dire crisis financially to develop another park?
I just wanted to point out that we are getting a grant for the pavilion. Thank you.
John had a comment? Still with us?
Yes. I just want to do, the county planning department has come up several times in this discussion, and I work for the county planning department, so I want to put that on the record. I had no involvement in this project from the county side. I, I don't get involved with the county block grant or the farmland protection program, open space and farmland protection program. But I did go and interview the person who does that stuff in advance of this meeting, just to find out sort of the backstory. And I, I do want to reiterate what Sally said. The county has never contributed money from that farmland and open space protection fund for recreation use in the past. It's only been for open space and farmland protection, not for ball fields, not for tennis courts. None of that stuff was eligible under the original guidelines. And Sally and some other people from Rhinebeck and Winnicke prevailed on the county and got them to relent and make an exception for this park. That's the story I was told. So what you have is an unusual situation in which the county gave quite a bit of money out of their farmland and open space protection fund for something that could be used for recreation, but the primary use for that fund, and that's conservation easement, was supposed to be for agriculture and open space.
No, 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 no.
Well, let me finish. Well, let me finish.
Wait, 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 wait.
Richard? John speaking.
This is how I understand and how it's told to me. So recreation fields are allowed under the conservation easement, and there's no prohibition against them, but open space agricultural use is also part of the package. And so as I understand it, what, what the committee did was try to balance all those prerogatives that were part of the original plan. So whether there should be more fields or less fields, the county has deliberately taken a local decision point of view on this. We've been asked by various advocates to get involved and put pressure on the town for various things. And it's my understanding that the county has said, this is a local matter. You know, we, we gave our money, we, we also administer the block grant program, which can be only used for certain types of uses, in which handicap bathrooms are one of them. So I just wanted to clarify that, that the recreational use was an exception in this program. I think it's worked out good. I think we have a plan that has been worked on by a long time by the committee that has recreational fields, has tennis courts and skate park and walking trails and all the sorts of things that constitution a recreational park. Recreation is more about, is more than about playing fields. My kids went through soccer and baseball and all the rest, but they also enjoyed getting out in nature and walking in, in, in open lands, and that's part of what a recreational park should be all about, a variety of different diverse uses. What I see is we have a Phase One plan, which is primarily infrastructure to get the ball rolling. It's based on limited budgets. And I, for one, would like to see things start moving forward on the property rather than being stalled by continual requests for new items. Let's get going on what we see on the boards and continue to work with the community to incorporate more fields in in the future plans. I don't see that as a major problem. What I see right now is Phase One needs a road, needs bathrooms, needs basics. And that's what I would like to say upfront.
Thank you, John.
I, I agree with John. I mean, we're being asked to rule on, do site plan approval on Phase One. This construction, the roads, the sidewalks, the entrance and stuff. And conceptually talk about Phase Two, the ball fields. Ball fields are, there's, I don't understand, there's any money for the ball fields right now. That's something that's going to happen down the line, and we'll be coming in for site plan approval of the ball fields when it actually happens. But for now, we're just talking about the roads, the entrances, and then we're getting into debates about how many of something in the future that we don't even know when that's going to be happening. And I would like to, at some point, when the public hearing is closed, get on to talking about Phase One to get this underway, to get the entrance, the roads, the infrastructure in so that we can then begin to look to Phase Two and to raise some money for the ball fields, and something I personally am interested in, and that's the community center, which really would benefit the community as Phase Three down the line. Something we desperately need in this community to serve an enormous population. There are no meeting rooms anywhere. There's one, a small room in Town Hall, there's like nothing in Village Hall. We really need a space for the community to, to have as a community center. We had the Star Institute years ago, that went away. Rhinebeck, you know, our forefathers knew what we needed, and that evaporated. Now it's a restaurant, and I wish we had kept that. And I, I'd like to see that happen. So I need, we need to get Phase One so we can get to Phase Two, so we can get to Phase Three, something which I personally really want to get to, that's the community center.
Any further comments? Yes?
Yeah, so, because I don't know, so if Phase One is approved, then there's all, you know, is it possible that there's going to be more fields?
It doesn't, it doesn't, it does not close the door on anything.
Because that's, and I think that's what confuses me, because I, I understood that this is it and that's it.
No, it's not.
No.
No, this is wrong.
It's not.
And because, you know, and to say something, you know, like a community center, which is very important because you want to put things all together. That's what, how the vision I see of a recreational park where you put out all together. Because I would tell you, there's many rooms around the town where people can meet, but it's not the same to have it all simple. It's the same, what I'm trying to say with a recreational park. You know, I know kids can go and play everywhere. It's not the same to try to make a better space, you know? And if there's a Phase Two as a possibility, I'm, I'm happy, you know? That's all I want to know.
There, there is a Phase Two, and as David said, there's hope to be a Phase Three, although that's a little more far off. Thank you.
Just in response to a couple of things that were, was, I'm sorry. This, I'll go backwards based on what Ms. Barrios said. That any changes require Winnicke's approval. And again, if we can't get, can't get the park committee and Winnicke to agree right now, when they have all of the facts, what makes we, what makes any of us think that it's going to happen in, in the future? All we're asking for is a notation on the map. We didn't ask for anything to be built, just a notation on the map. It's the stroke of a pen, and I'm sure the engineer could confirm that. I've represented planning boards, I've represented developers. I know how much effort it takes to put a note on a map. I've represented planning boards, I've represented town boards. In terms of, uh, the use of the property, I just have to clarify that. The old use, before the easement was amended, "The property shall be used solely for parks, agriculture, forestry, recreation, trails, horticulture, library, and related purposes." I'm just reading the first sentence. The new use, when it was amended, changed the use to, "The property shall be used solely as a public park devoted to outside, outdoor recreational uses, both active and passive." It goes on to define active recreation. Sorry. Active recreation such as soccer, tennis, basketball courts, and ball fields. And finally, in terms of the recusal issue, your town law says, "Only if there's a financial interest must a board member recuse themselves." I bear no financial interest in this matter, neither does my husband. I'm sure you all know that only if there's a financial interest must a party recuse themselves from the matter. You can't just recuse yourself, or you don't have to recuse yourself because your spouse has an opinion. It's just ridiculous. I think those are all my points.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none. The town board adopted and amended neg deck for the park for Phase One the other night. We have a copy of the resolution up here if anyone wants to see it. In order for the village planning board to proceed, they need to be able to close the public hearing to do their site plan review and any other permitting review that they do. And each of our municipalities is responsible for permitting within our specific jurisdictions. We will be getting together to make sure that the road from the three oh eight down to the pavilion actually meets in the right place between the village and the town to make sure we coordinate these things. And other than that, the intermunicipal agreement has, that the town and the village have entered into, has said that any public hearing would be held jointly between the village and town planning boards, the two ports. So I believe, unless we get a different opinion from council, if we needed any further public hearing on anything specific, we would probably have to do it jointly. I don't know. We'd have to find out whether we could do it individually within our jurisdiction or not, I don't know.
We have to decide whether we want to do the site plan approval. I mean, when we talk preliminarily about the bathrooms, you know, the, the village board had some comments about that. Sure, we talked about the entrances, the library. It'd be nice to hear input from the town board, even though we can't vote on it, at least we get in, you know, we would share input votes, and that might be very useful to do the site plan simultaneously, and then we could vote separately on our various issues in, in the town and the village. And a lot, and a lot, and most of what's being done is in the village.
Yeah, the pavilion's the major thing that's in the town.
So I'm not sure then what process is down to.
Well, we need to close the public hearing. So I would like a motion on the village part to close the public. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the village public hearing is closed.
On the part of the town planning board, I hear a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. From this point forward, as far as Phase One is concerned, both of our boards will now be going and do a site plan review. And in the case of the town, there's a wetland permit involved and a special use permit for a nonprofit, non-commercial, outdoor recreational facility. So at this point, I guess our next steps are?
We'd have to begin, start to look at the details of the site plan, going over step by step. We have issues that we discussed about lighting, about sidewalks and the grass strip between the sidewalks, about the entrance and the signage, about the library access, about parking at the library, about access from the library down to the pool so kids could walk up and down to programs we're running with the rec, with the rec camp to get kids access up and down to the pool. When, when the library has big events, the overflow parking is down the hill as well. People walk up the hill from the, to get to the library. So we have a lot of issues to talk about in site plan review.
We need things moved from the conceptual to on paper, kind of there for us, rather than, well, it's this or that, which is what we've kind of looked, looked at in the past.
What might be easiest for both of us to do is each of our boards to meet separately with the committee on the specific issues within each jurisdiction, see how far we get and where we go with that, and see if we're then really ready to come back together with sufficient information with the applicant to make sure that everything does knit up properly and that we're in a position then to move forward with the approval process. If that sounds good to you guys. What do you think?
I guess so, that works.
Would you want me to be on that committee, Michael?
It's not, no, it's not, it's not, it's going to be, they're going to be doing their work. We're going to be doing our work, and then when we get to, when we feel we've reached a point where we're.
Are we creating a committee?
No, then our two boards, then our two boards will meet together.
We're going to have workshop.
Basically, with the two boards meeting together.
Or a meeting, or a joint meeting.
Or a joint meeting, however we wish to, to label it. And it'll be, we'll have to notice it in advance, and so that the public can certainly attend and listen. Does that sound good?
Yeah, that works, that sounds good.
Okay, I guess for, I guess for tonight, from the group as a whole, could we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second? You stand adjourned. Thank you all for attending. As I said, the meetings of each planning board are open to the public. Any joint meetings we have will also be open to the public.